Session, the next item on the agenda is item C-044. Item H-R112 are related and will be handled as quasi judicial matters. All those who will testify on 044 and R112, please stand and raise your right hand. Is that everyone? The other right hand, I'm just joking. Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Okay. So this is Counselor Sanchez, 044.
Thank you, Madam President. This is Committee Substitute 0-44, Annexation 17 EPC 40061, 17 EPC 40062, annexing 12.3 acres, more or less located in the northerly portion of tracks 14-20, Row 4, Unit 4, west of Westland, town of Patrisko, located north of Interstate 40 between Royal Vista Boulevard and 118th Street, and amending the Zone Map Amendment to establish SU2 for town center zoning. I move a due pass. And this evening, there will be time limits for the presenters as follows. The presentation by council staff, Shannon Schultz, will have five minutes. The presentation by the applicant, Jim Stroger, will have 10 minutes if they need the entire 10 minutes. Public comments will be three minutes per speaker. Rebuttal by applicant, Jim Stroger will be allowed two minutes. Comments by Planning Department, if any, will have time to also basically do that. And at this time, I would like to turn this over to Shannon Schultz.
Thank you, Madam President and Counselors. This is a request for annexation for approximately 12.3 acres of land near I-40 and 98th Street. I provided a map up on the screens for you. If you can make out that red circle, that's the area of land we're discussing. If accepted, this ordinance will also establish zoning for these 12.3 acres. This request was heard by the Environmental Planning Commission, or the EPC, in December of 2017. The EPC found that the proposed annexation generally does further all the affected adopted plans and policies in the area. They considered the request against R-54 1990, which is the city's annexation policies, and also found that those were furthered. In addition, the applicant justified the establishment of the zoning for these parcels, which is SU2 for town center, that that was also appropriate under R-270 1980. The SU2 for town center zone generally, but not completely, tracks with what we know today as the MXM zone, or what we formerly knew as the C2 zone. The Board of County Commissioners did also hear this case in 2017 and unanimously voted to approve the annexation request. Also, the EPC voted unanimously to further a recommendation to the council to approve the request. With that, I stand for questions, or we can move on to Mr. Stroger's piece of the presentation.
Counselor Harris.
Yes, just a comment, not a question. Some people do actually watch our city council meetings, not a whole lot, but some people do. And I see that they're hearing, the camera's on Ms. Schultz, and now it's on me, but I think if the GovTV folks could sometimes go back and forth to the maps so people know what we're talking about, that would be helpful on TV, I mean, so that the folks could see the map on TV, or if they want to watch the replay. Thank you very much. And Ms. Yara or Ms. Ortega, could you point the area that we're talking about on that? Very good, thank you.
Next will be Jim Stroger, the applicant.
Thank you, Madam President and Counselors. My name is Jim Stroger. I appreciate the presentation that Ms. Schultz just gave you. I know it's been a long evening, and so I will be brief. We did work very closely with both the county staff and the initial request for the county's support for this annexation, which we received prior to submitting our petition for annexation and justification for the zoning, the establishment of the zoning. We worked closely with the Planning Department's staff at that time, went through the EPC, received recommendation for approval from the EPC, both in, with findings in support of both the annexation resolution and our compliance with that, as well as the zoning, R-270 1980 at that time. And with that, I think, and then we've worked very closely with council staff as this project has moved to the LUPs hearings and before this body this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I really don't have anything to add to the presentation made by Ms. Schultz. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have public comments at this time. Did anyone sign up to speak? Okay. And now the rebuttal by the applicant. Did you have anything to rebut?
I think I agree with myself and Ms. Schultz, so yes. I'm good.
And we have, I guess, some comments by the Planning Department. Mr. Campbell.
Madam President and Counselors, I have no presentation if there are questions. We think that the record speaks for itself, and we also support this annexation as shown by both the unanimous decisions of the County Commission and the EPC.
Mr. Campbell, I have one question. My question to you is in reference of the timeframe. This went before the administration, over a year ago. Why did it take so long for this to move to the Land Use Committee and then to the full council?
I don't have a good answer for that, Mr. Madam President and Counselor Sanchez. It is an unusual, as you know, in the olden days, there, you know, annexations happened fairly routinely, but now with our, with the new state laws that require us to ask permission of the BCC and then work on these, somehow this is, this is an unusual kind of situation and is the only one that we've seen in recent vintage, so.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the Counselors? Counselor Harris, followed by Counselor Davis.
Yes, thank you, Madam President and the sponsors. One thing that I don't think is clear, maybe it was stated, but I missed it, sort of a 20,000-feet rendition of why we're doing this, because just the people watching on TV, they, you know, they've heard the technical explanations, but, you know, why do we need this land and what's our point in getting it?
There is the notion that this land would be sold and would be used, and I think there is a companion bill that you're going to take up next that has to do with zoning and allowing certain uses on there for a hospital purpose. And this is the right-sized land, it's in the right location, and in terms of planning, it allows us some longer-term planning than sometimes we're doing in more immediate kinds of locations. So we think that this is a proper use of the city's regulatory and planning controls.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President, and I made my case at the LUPs, but I'll do it again here just for the record. Mr. Campbell, are you aware, I don't disagree with the annexation, but there is another provision here that hasn't, sort of an amendment to the plan that allows an exceptional height of like 110 feet for a proposed hospital that at this point doesn't exist and hasn't been applied for. Are you aware of any precedent that the city has ever changed height requirements arbitrarily for a zoning without a plan submitted?
Kind of a loaded question when you say arbitrarily. The city does not act arbitrarily.
Of course not.
Nor capriciously, I might add.
Historically.
Historically, we do in fact make designations for allowance of particular heights. And as you know, in the IDO, height is a big deal. And when, when you have a property like this that sits out without any other, other land uses developed around it, then establishing a height parameter is a proper use. I mean, it's, it, because the IDO, as you know, if you're building, you have to preserve the view planes and the buffers between disparate uses. So, no, I don't think that this is arbitrary, nor is it, is it in any way improper given where this use is.
Thank you. Counselor Harris.
Yes, and sort of getting to that, Mr. Campbell, would it be appropriate to kind of look at an area and kind of look at the market and what that land would support, and then make adjustments to a particular area based on what the market is likely to support? In other words, that versus spot zoning, could you explain the difference?
Oh, Madam President, Counselor Harris, this area is basically vacant. It is an area that is intended for future development, and so it is proper. When you look at the freeway nearby, and when you look at the fact that there will be a north-south road nearby, it's proper for a town center to locate in that, in that location. I don't think it's spot zoning. I think it is consistent with, now, does it zone the entire area? No, it only deals with the land that has been applied for, but given historic planning principles here, we want to see a use, an important public use, like a hospital or a town center, in a place that is accessible for ambulances and the like. Thank you.
Any other questions? No, Counselor Ortega.
Mr. Campbell, when setting, when amending the master plan, basically what we're doing is we're setting, I mean, we're, you know, Counselor Davis brought up the height, the height question, and I guess basically it could be up to 100 and, I mean, if the hos, if, if a hospital was to locate at this place, they could go up to that height, but not necessarily achieve that height.
That's, that's correct. Madam President and Counselor, yes, it, it is with an allowable height of 110 feet. It's not a requirement, it's not a minimum.
Right, so, so if a hospital came in and they decided they only wanted to go up 85 feet, for example, then they could, they would be allowed to come in under the requirement that's set tonight, right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. The hospitals are built, the downtown hospital is 100 feet high. And I was talking to Shannon earlier this evening, and she made a really important point that she said that hospitals are built upwards because for their patients, the doctors have much better access than if it was built on a single level. So, I mean, that's why the hospitals are normally built upwards, where doctors have immediate access, access to their patients. And again, it hopefully will be the maximum height, and the west-side residents and residents throughout this region will be able to get, you know, get to that hospital quickly.
Any other questions? Counselor Sanchez, did we, did you move the bill?
I did.
There was a motion in the second.
And I have a floor amendment also, and this would be floor amendment number one to Committee Substitute 0-18-44, and I will read the explanation. The purpose of this amendment is to make clear that the Western Master Plan is now known as the Western Framework Plan for the Adoption of the Integrated Development Ordinance, the IDO. When the IDO was adopted on May of 2018, the update to the city land use and regulatory system changed all master plans to the city framework plans. While the request for annexation did not, did not come to the city before the IDO was adopted, this amendment makes it clear that moving forward into the future, the Westland Master Plan is now called the Westland Framework Plan.
There's a motion in the second to 044, Amendment Number One. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes, we're back on the bill. So if there's no further discussion, can we vote on it?
Urgent support.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure, since we were voting on both of them at the same time. So there's a motion in a second for 044 as amended. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. That's a nine to one.
Eight to one.
Eight to one. We just, I just added a counselor. Okay, and now the, the next one is R-112. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. R-112 is adopting amendments to the Westland Master Plan and Western Albuquerque Land Holding Sector Development Plan to move SU2 zoning regulations from the master plan to the sector development plan while deleting errors and inconsistencies, to remove references to the Burnley County zoning designations, to create a use table as part of the sector development plan, to add hospital as a permissive use in the SU2 for town center zones with the, an allowable height of 110 feet, and to make other minor changes consistent with the intent of the plans. I move a due pass.
There's a motion in a second for a due pass of R-112. If there's any questions from Counselors, anyone else? No? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. That's eight to one. This time we have nine counselors. Motion passes. We are, we are now on 045. Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you once again, Madam President. 0-45 is amending Chapter 2, Article 6 of the Revised Ordinance of Albuquerque relating to the Commission of American Indian-Alaska Native Affairs. I move a due pass.
There's a motion in the second for a due pass of 045.
And I would like to also move a floor substitute for 0-45.
There's a motion, second for floor substitute of 045. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. We're back on the bill.
And Madam President, I'd like to move deferral as substituted to the March 4 meeting.
There's a motion in the second from me for a deferral to the March 4 council meeting. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. We are now on 049. Counselor Harris.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to move the bill and then move an amendment, but I'll first move a due pass on 049. Second?
Second.
And I'm also going to move an amendment which reduces the time to the first meeting in April to pass the capital. And here's why I think this is important, because right now, the state legislature has more money than they've ever had, at least in anyone's recollection. And we're at the meeting, the Internal Government Relations Meeting on Saturday with Joe Thompson, and he suggested that it would be good for the city to not have our capital passed before the state passes theirs, because as he pointed out, they're smart, and if they see something's funded, they might pull it off, and, and then we'd lose it. So it'd be better just to kind of work around what the state does. I know there's some discussion about extending it to maybe March 18th, but what Mr. Thompson said is that they wouldn't have any idea, really, if it was, what was in there yet. And the first meeting in April would not only give us time to look at what was in the, in the capital program, but also from the state, but also to get a feel from the governor's office about what they might line on a veto. So where's the amendment? I'll go ahead and I'll move this amendment, Amendment Number One. On page two, strike lines 13 through 17, and replace the following. The council shall approve the capital improvements program as proposed, or shall amend it and approve it by the first scheduled city council meeting in April of the year submitted. The council shall hold at least, says on, I think it means one, one public hearing on the proposed program. Is there a second? Yes, so, and just a couple other things. I know there's some concern of Ms. Yara talking, so, I know, we spoke that especially now, you don't even have your, your budget assistant yet, that doing both of these simultaneously in April could have caused a hardship for, for our office, but does this work?
Madam President, Counselor Harris, yes, I was concerned that the CIP budget process would spill over into our operating budget process. We are set to get the proposed operating budget for FY '20 from the mayor's office on April 1st, so I was concerned about the 120 days. This, this is a little more workable, we won't be knee-deep in the operating budget by the beginning of April, so.
Counselor Sanchez. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure. And another thing I heard, some concerns, is that they're thinking that maybe the, the mayor might look at this deadline as some sort of default that the mayor could impose his own capital program, but we've actually been through that before, 2009 with Mayor Chavez. We, we got our capital program passed late, and then Mayor Chavez said that, well, that means I get my lagoon at Tingly Beach. And initially, we hired a lawyer and gave us an opinion, but then after a while, we just realized we can ignore the mayor and just, we, well, whatever we put on the ballot is whatever passes, so. And if you go down Tingly Beach, no one's swimming in the summer over there, so. And Mr. Rayal, does the mayor support this legislation?
Madam President and Counselor Harris, we think this makes sense, as for all the comments you made, and we had the conversation at the Legislative Committee meeting last Saturday. Given the circumstances and given the fact that we have some flexibility, I think it makes sense for us to just give the legislature some time to make their decisions, and then we can follow on and see how we can support what they've decided and maybe even amend the program as necessary.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a question for Ms. Yara. Did you have an opportunity to consult with the committee of the whole chairman, Counselor Jones, regarding your concerns?
Madam President, Counselor Sanchez, yes, I have spoke with Counselor Jones about this, this proposed amendment and its effect on our current CIP plan that is being worked. I believe she can probably state her own opinion on that, but she is aware of, of my concerns and then, of course, the operating budget issue, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, yes, I do have concerns. This is my 12th year on the council, this would make it like my sixth CIP, I believe. I don't remember ever having to extend this, defer this, for, for any reason, and I'm quite confident there have been times during that period when the state of New Mexico had a lot of money, and I'm sure there was, and we were wondering if we were going to get it. Why, what makes this particular time so special? And I don't understand what the concern is about deferring this. We have it, we're ready to go. The mayor submitted his, he has plenty of time to look at what we have done and talk with us about it if we choose to change. I don't understand why we're playing with, thinking that this will affect the state, because in years past, we have also had a budget that the state had to make their decisions after we had our budget, and we've never been harmed by it that I'm aware of. I don't understand why this budget cycle.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you, and I'll also probably have Mr. Rayal respond as well as me, he could probably respond better. I guess my first comment is I don't think we've ever had anywhere nearly as much money in the state for capital, at least as long as I've been on the council, I haven't been anywhere close. Secondly, is just because we've sort of fumbled along with bad policy in the past doesn't mean we should continue. And, and what the mayor's pointed out, and I think I agree with him, is that we oftentimes don't get our fair share of capital in the center of the state, and he's trying something different, and he's asking to see if he can get as much as possible and then have the, our budget kind of be flexible to fit in around that. And one of the things is like if they want to match, or if there's something, or if the state funds something most of the way, and then we can actually move something from one bucket over here. And, and I don't think an amendment is the right answer, because as soon as we pass it, constituencies automatically develop around whatever we've done. So, so for those reasons, I think it is different, and just having better policy is always a good idea.
Counselor Jones.
I agree, Counselor Harris, that having better policy is a good idea. I'm not sure this is better policy. I, again, I go back to historically, this hasn't done, were you not budget chair the last CIP process? Were you not the budget chair of the last CIP process?
Last CIP, was it me? I think I might have been, yeah.
Yes, did you ask for a deferral to put it in because you thought we were going to get more money?
Well, if RJ Barry would have said.
If it were good policy, if it's good policy now, why was it not good policy then?
No one pointed it out to me. I mean, sometimes, I mean, we've all been guilty of just sort of going along with something that we've always done, and we don't change it because that's the way we've always done things before. I mean, one thing I'd like to do, this is off-topic, is I'd like to get a committee together to like go through our ordinances and start ripping some out, because they're there just because they've always been there. And, and I think maybe we should have a task force that says for every ordinance we pass, we get rid of one. But, I mean, there's, our ordinance books are filled, our statutes are filled.
Counselor, can we just stick with this topic?
No, the topic is, we always, we have lots and lots of laws on our books that we do just because that's the way we've always done things.
Thank you, Counselor, Madam President.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you. I still do not agree with this, I don't think it's necessary. We have the right to amend this, as you all know. If there's a bunch of money there, we can change it. If we don't put in for enough money, if we, if we wait, we might not get the money. This is a system that has worked in the past. I don't believe we've ever had an issue with it that I'm aware of. I think, I think we've had more experience at this than the mayor has, no, no offense intended, but I think it's, I think we need to stick with the policy we have in place for now, and if we choose to change this next year, when we're not in the middle of the CIP budget, I think we should revisit it then. Thank you.
Any other, Counselor Harris?
Can I have Mr. Rayal address, because I think he has some other ideas as well?
Madam President and Counselors, a couple of things that may be different that have not occurred in the past, and that is, as you all know, our elections were, were changed by the legislature in this, the previous legislative session. If I look at the clock and look at the timing of how the CIP was structured when the ordinances were first developed, again, going back some years when I was here before, it was always intended that the CIP would get done in a process so that we would be able to get the actual language and the ballot printed and set up for an October election. We have the luxury this year that the election now is not in October, but in November, and so the, the rationale was simply that we have an extra month before things have to get done for the election process. So as a result, it made sense to look at why we, why we want to commit early, given the fact that there is ample dollars at the legislature. And then secondly is that, you all know, we consistently sit in front of the legislative committees during the session and get criticized for not spending all the capital in certain projects. And sometimes what happens is that the projects that the legislature may fund may not be on our priorities, or we may not have the match to get those done, and so we end up, in some cases, having to go back and reauthorize dollars for projects that legislators wanted us to get done, but we didn't have the match because we made a decision earlier in the process. Now, I'm not suggesting that that is, is the only reason, but in this particular case, we have some flexibility, and it's our perspective, let's use that flexibility to see if that changes the process and, and that we make better decisions on behalf of the citizens or residents of this community.
Counselor Ortega.
Mr. Rayal, so would this change, it would, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't violate anything statutorily or from our charter or anything like that, it's really procedurally? Is that sort of?
Madam President and Counselor, no, it's, the, the structure in terms of the CIP is really a process the council sets in place so that we're all moving forward and getting it done in a timely manner so that we can get this on the ballot, so.
So there may be projects that could actually have been funded through the CIP process that maybe we would get funded through the state, and then we could maybe have a little bit of time or a little bit of wiggle room, I guess, to maybe reconsider those projects or other projects?
Madam President and Counselor, I think it gives us the flexibility to do exactly that, to look at how we manage the, the process.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my understanding, and I think we need to do some research on this before this, we do this, but in fact, our deadlines do not change that much, little or no change, to having to have this done in August-ish, so I don't see, I don't understand the rationale for this, I truly don't, because obviously, we have asked for money from the state before, and we've gotten a lot, depending on how happy they are, or we haven't gotten enough, in our opinion. And how did we make up for that in the past, Mr.? that in the past, Mr. Real?
The way, Madam President and Counselor Jones, the way we made up in the past is we'd be sitting in Santa Fe asking for reauthorization for projects that we couldn't get funded because we didn't have enough money when they were appropriated by the legislature. Now, in a 30-day session, and well, excuse me, because we only do this every other year, it doesn't really impact. It's only a 60-day session. So in this particular case, I think it goes back to the fact that we have some time, and that's really the idea here, is to use that time to evaluate what happens in Santa Fe and then hopefully make better decisions about our capital program. And it may very well be, Counselors, that maybe what happens in Santa Fe doesn't change what you decide to do, but at least you've given us and given the opportunity to have that conversation. And as Counselor Harris pointed out at the Legislative Committee this past week, you know, our lobbyist said, "Look, give yourself some time. This could work in your favor."
Counselor Benton.
So, just to address the question of have things changed, I think my understanding, at least, is the high-dollar capital asks, what we would call regional projects or governor's call-type requests are more aligned, seem to be more aligned, with the powers that be in Santa Fe than they have been in the past. So that is a, that is a big difference. We've got some big-ticket items on there that are, that I think, as was said, it would be good to be able to react whether those are funded or not by the state. I just want to, on the parochial kind of level, talk about my set aside and the fact that sometimes unbeknownst to us, a neighborhood will go make a request and get it put in without necessarily a lot of coordination between our small district requests that I personally may have requested of our legislators, individual legislators, from their discretionary capital, whatever they end up getting allocated, which, again, this year appears to be greater than in the past. But if something like that occurs unbeknownst to me, or that we get kind of surprised by something, I like the ability also to adjust the allocation of my district's set aside. So that's a small point, but it's, you know, it would be an opportunity to adjust that if we get some money that, and this happens fairly often, that we're not expecting. Or one of our, one of our own requests from the council office is not funded, and then we're trying to adjust to get that project built. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Jones.
Just one more, and I'm not sure that this is valid, but it seems reasonable to me. And if we don't get as much as we think we would get, and we haven't allocated, but we have a basis to work on with what we're working on right now, which of us is going to give up the money that we have in the budget that we've put together so that someone else can have what they want if we don't get everything we want from the state, if we're depending on the state? Mr. Real, you could probably answer that.
Madam President and Counselor Jones, I'd be happy to help you find how to make those matches. I mean, you know, I will say, Counselors, look, this is an opportunity to do something that I think puts us in a better place. And, you know, notwithstanding, one of the things I would say, look, and you also have a mayor who is a legislator who knows how the state process works and has a lot of experience at that level. And his comment to me was, if you don't think that the legislators aren't paying attention to the capital program, their staff are paying attention. So that when they make these decisions, and they're going to see what the city put forth in their plan before they pull the trigger on their dollars to see how they're going to fund it. So I think it's good policy for us, and we would support the legislation.
Yeah, I think we voted on the amendment already. If there's no other questions...
We haven't voted on it.
Yeah, we didn't vote on the amendment? Okay. So Counselor Harris, did you read it into the record?
The amendment is on page two, strike line 13 through 17, and replaced with the following, "The council shall approve the capital improvements program as proposed or shall amend and approve it by the first scheduled city council meeting in April of the year submitted. The council shall hold at least one public hearing on the proposed program."
Second? Is there a second? There's a motion in the second for amendment 049. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. We're back on the bill. So...
I think we've debated it. I urge your support.
Okay. All those in favor of 049, is there...
Excuse me, I have a question. I called you to go on that. I saw your... So eight to one?
Oh, sorry. I didn't notice that. So, all those in favor of 049 as amended, raise your hand. Six to three. Opposed, no. Motion passes. So now we are on Counselor Gibson, R. 128. This has been one interesting meeting, huh?
Yes, it has.
See, we need to get more viewers. Counselor Gibson, 128.
Okay. Thank you, Madam President. R. 19128 is amending R. 1849 to extend the deadline for the preparation of a list of recommendations for potential programs or legislation on short-term rentals. And I mentioned this before, that we've been meeting on this, or I've only gone to one meeting, but they have been, and working hard on this. But, you know, sometimes things take a little bit longer, and I would turn it over to Ms. Morris to give us more detail.
Good morning, good evening, Madam President and Counselors. I already read the amendment. So this bill would extend the deadline for the task force to present their report to June 30th. The original legislation had it set for March 1st. The task force has had six meetings and are working diligently on a relatively controversial topic. The short-term rental task force has also garnered quite a bit of attention from members of the public, folks in the tourism industry, as well as folks in the short-term rental industry. And so because there is so much interest, we'd like to have a public meeting so that we can present some early recommendations to the public and get some feedback from them on that, and to kind of take the community's temperature on what we're working on. And so this would provide us with enough time to have that public meeting, as well as a couple task force meetings after that to review and think about, you know, what we will have heard from the community.
Thank you, Counselor Gibson.
I don't think there's probably any public comment on this, but I'll just go ahead and close and urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor, there was a motion in the second for a due pass of R. 128. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. Counselor Winter.
Thank you, Madam President. This is urging the Legislature of the State of New Mexico to pass House Bill 231 during the 2019 legislative session. Counselors, and this is a memorial, and boy, this is the first memorial I've ever done. I've always thought we shouldn't get involved in other government business, but, you know, I was asked to do it, and I think because of some of our crime issues we have in the city, that it really might help, and this is adding a second license plate to automobiles, and there, and I've been getting some emails about it, there is a cost of $2 per vehicle. Now, I think there's some misunderstanding, because there is some legislation up in Santa Fe to increase registration fees for automobiles, but that is not this. This is just adding it at a cost of $2. And I really think that what we're looking at is basically, it's another tool that law enforcement can use to really find and apprehend criminals. So I've got lieutenant here who's going to really explain why they think this is a good idea. Thank you.
Madam President, members of the council, thanks for having me here. Give me an opportunity to speak to you guys about this. Chief Mike Guyer asked me to come tonight to give you guys some information about this, let you guys know that as far as the police department is concerned, we're in support of this. It would be very beneficial for officers to assist the public, help keep them safe, also to apprehend suspects of crimes. I was going to provide you guys with a couple of examples of how the front license plate would assist us in doing this. As you guys know, excuse me, as you guys know, Albuquerque is currently having a high increase in auto thefts. We have a very severe stolen vehicle problem. A lot of times, if you have a vehicle behind you, you're driving in your patrol car, offenders in stolen vehicles aren't going to want to come upside of you or pass you, because they know as soon as they pass you, you can run license plates, or you'll identify the vehicle that goes out on our bolos for stolen vehicle list. If we have, thank you, if we have front license plates, if a car is behind you, you can utilize your mirrors, rearview mirrors, side mirrors. You can see those plates, and you can actually check vehicles while they're behind you or alongside of you in traffic. That would increase the number of auto theft apprehensions and recoveries that we would have. Another example would be robberies. If you have a local gas station, vehicles will pull in, they run in, either do beer runs, or they'll actually do an armed robbery, steal cash, merchandise, whatever the case is. If they pull up to the front of the business, they know that they're on video camera. A lot of times, they'll just reverse out, and we have surveillance of the vehicle and possibly the offender, but not much to go off of to follow up on, other than possibly a type of vehicle and description of the offender. If we had that front license plate, having both angles of that would give us an opportunity to catch that on surveillance and give us more to follow up on. Another, along the lines of stolen vehicles and stolen license plates, a lot of times suspects will steal license plates off of vehicles, put them on a different vehicle, and they'll use that to commit a crime so the vehicle doesn't come back to them, it comes back to somebody else. Another thing that they'll have issues with is if there's a front license plate, well, now they have two plates, they'd have to either take off, so it's either too time-consuming to take the plate off, or they don't cover that front plate, and it just gives us that opportunity to still get that information to do follow-up investigations. So hopefully, following up on these can lead to bigger arrests, anywhere from just traffic citations all the way up to homicide offenders that we're looking for, robberies, violent crimes, things of that nature. It would just help us and assist us in that, so.
Counselor Harris.
Thank you. Question for lieutenant. Has the city of Albuquerque done any analysis, or have we heard from other cities that have gone from rear-only to front license plate, their police departments, and have they noticed an increase in apprehensions?
Madam President, members of the council, honestly, I don't have that information. I'm not sure if there has been a study. I definitely think that's something we would need to do. I do know that there's numerous states that have it. We obviously don't, but just in my own experience as law enforcement officer, I think it would be beneficial, just off of some of the examples that I have provided, but I do not have that statistical data or anything to support that.
Okay, and thank you for that, but it might be a good idea to get that information for the state. I'm still going to support this. Thanks.
Counselor Davis.
Thanks, and thank you, Lieutenant, for being here all this time, and thanks, Counselor Winter, for doing that with us. Actually, Counselor Harris, there is a study that's referenced in this, and it mentions that in Virginia, for example, their enforcement of traffic-related offenses went up 23% when they added their front license plate, 23% in the first year. And I think we would all do well to know that auto-related crimes in Albuquerque had a better enforcement rate. At 23% of closure would be great for us, and so I would urge our support.
Counselor Winter to close.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is, and I guess in Santa Fe it's important, this is nonpartisan. There's a Republican and a Democrat. Representative Reiman, Representative Rio Lobal are carrying this bill. It's going to its first committee tomorrow, and so, and then again, we're not passing anything, we're just urging somebody. So urge your support.
Thank you, Counselor Winter. With that, there's a motion in the second for M. 3. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. I wanted to vote no badly. I have a low rider, and I don't want one in the front of the car. Counselor Sanchez, 051.
Thank you, Madam President. 051 is amending Article 12, Section 5 of the city charter and amending Article 13, Section 2, 3, 4, 7, and 11 of the city charter relating to election campaign financing. And our city clerk is here to speak briefly on this issue. We did discuss this in the past, and, Madam Clerk, go and proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, Counselors. At the end of last year, you passed election code reform. This is a cleanup bill for that reform. Between then and now, I've just noticed a couple of small inconsistencies, so this bill just corrects some of those. There's five main things that it does, which I can go through, if you like, very briefly, or if you all have already had a chance to take a look at it, I can skip that because I know it's late.
Does anyone have any questions for, or do you think she should go through the presentation? You've already, everyone's already done their homework, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, Madam President.
So with that, Counselor Sanchez to close.
And Madam Clerk, thank you for your work on these issues. You've done a very good job. So thank you, Ms. DuHig, and I urge your support.
All those in favor of 051 say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes. There be no further business. We are adjourned.
They need two hearings.
Oh, did I miss that one?
It's amending...
Oh, hold on one second.
Do we have to unadjourn?
I have to unadjourn?
Do we have to unadjourn?
I'm sorry. Because this amends the charter, we need to wait until your next meeting to pass this. I'm sorry.
Okay. I move to unadjourn. I move to unadjourn.
Okay. There's a motion, a second to unadjourn.
And I move, I'd like to move for reconsideration on a due pass.
A second? There's a motion, a second for, do I have to take a vote on that?
Yeah.
A second for reconsideration on 051. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes.
I move a deferral until next meeting.
There's a motion, a second for a deferral of 051. All those until our next meeting, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion passes with that, and this meeting is adjourned.